Okay, thank you. This is Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, planning board meeting, and we'll open the meeting. Before we get started, obviously, the entire Newcastle family is grieving a loss, and I think it would be appropriate for us to take a moment of silence to give our thoughts and prayers to supervisor Ivy Poole, her family, for the tragic loss of their son over the weekend. Thank you.
And may God comfort them.
Okay, we move to our first matter. This is a public hearing for 16 HRR LLC, excuse me, Farivalchio Lot 4. This is an application for a site plan, stormwater pollution prevention plan, amended subdivision, clearing and grading limit line, steep slopes and tree removal permit approval, 16 Hollow Ridge Road, continued from January 21st.
Thank you, Geraldine Tortorella, Paco Man Tortorella, and Weckstein. John Kellard is here tonight with Kellard Sessions, and Steve and Mike D'Onno are here as well. And please accept our condolences for the loss of the Poole's son. We made a submission on February 10th. We have additional material that we've provided. I'd really like to focus the presentation tonight, if we can, on the engineering issues and the landscaping issues that we had talked about last time. And I'll very soon turn the floor over to Mr. Kellard. We want to talk about the utility layout existing and proposed, and in connection with that, the construction sequencing that we've developed related to that, and the additional stormwater system modifications that we've added to address that. We also have a more developed landscaping plan, and that included updating the tree inventory plan, so we'll speak about that quickly, and the recalculation of the tree replacement requirements and conformance with your code. So with that, I'd like to turn the floor over to John.
Good evening. Maybe I'll just...
Yeah, I think that'll be better, Ray, for your needs. So, John, you'll focus on the water line and the infrastructure coming into the property on the shared driveway?
Uh, yes.
We were really concerned about that last time.
Yes. The landscape plan pretty much is around the house. Good evening, thank you. We prepared a landscape plan, a detailed landscape plan, for the area around, surrounding the home. It includes 27 trees, 206 shrubs, and 199 one-gallon ground cover containers. The overstorey trees are located along the entry drive, the understory trees along the entry walk, and the foundation plantings. The replacement value for the shrubs and trees shown on this plan is 53 trees. We received Mr. Corelli's memo regarding our plan, and he was kind enough to give me some time this afternoon to sit down and work through the plan with him. And what we've concluded was to add an additional six overstory trees and one understory tree for a total of 34 total trees on the garden. Four of those trees will be maples, which we will plant down by Hollow Ridge Road, down in the vicinity of where the septic is.
Where the expansion septic is?
Yeah, a little to the, I guess it's the northeast of the septic itself. It's...
My berry's here. Down here?
Where you're talking down?
All the way down there.
Oh, that, over here?
Yeah.
Is here, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. When you say maples, Dennis, what are we talking? I see it was red maples, but can we talk sugar maples? Something native?
No, they, I mean, they were all native trees that they had proposed.
Okay.
No, I was okay with that. It was just the way the code's written and the distributions of overstory, understory. It's just the fine tuning of the math.
Yeah, the tree line is a significant distance back from Hollow Ridge Road in that area, so we'll plant four additional trees there. The overall replacement value would then be increased to approximately 58 trees.
And it appears you've done a pretty good job in terms of avoidance of, you know, on the line that goes down to avoid trees. It looks like you've, you know, moved the line around the trees to save...
We did whatever we could to save trees along that route. Mr. Corelli also spent some time with Alpine Tree Service on site, and they included a tree inventory which totals 98 trees to be removed. That includes the expansion area and the sewer line traversing the hillside, which we're hopefully not having to remove those trees at this time.
Right, right.
But based on those 98 trees, there's a replace, it equates to a replacement value of 170 trees. So with the 58 tree credit, we would be looking to pay into the tree bank for 112 trees.
Dennis, the shrubs that are mentioned here, are they prone toward, you know, deer grazing? If so, what do we do to protect those?
Well, I think everything, when it's first planted, is prone for different reasons. Some because of herbivory, some because, especially the trees, you worry about the rubbing, which I definitely observed, and other properties. As far as, you know, protections, you know, when the layout kind of happens, I mean, it's part of the more interior part of the home, you know, you're kind of going to be restricted to sort of that over netting. At first, I can't imagine, you know, going to fence around that. But as far as the other trees are concerned, not so much from a herbivory perspective, but at least to put, you know, some sort of, it's like a, I, I, a lot, some people use wrap. I'm not a big fan of the wrap, but there's like, you know, almost like a plastic corrugated pipes you could slice, or, you know, even PVC just for the first few years, which obviously allowed the tree to sort of expand in that diameter. But it, you know, it's not the deer's choice when the, you know, want to rub the velvet off the antlers to actually go, because it's at a lot of those point, the trees are like of the size that they prefer to do that, so it's always like a constant battle, so. So there's options. I'm not, you know, I'm not as concerned about that as I was, just making sure that we got kind of all the numerics right, and, which I had spoken to, you know, Mr. Kellard this afternoon, that, you know, his initial concerns in doing, you know, some of the math when you start getting to the shrubs, I didn't disagree with them. But having said that, you know, the shrub replacement criteria that's listed in I, to me, is sort of a way to help applicants supplement where, you know, you start running out of room where you desire to plant more trees. But it still has to sort of be, not necessarily to the level of the numerics of the trees, but, you know, I said to him, I was kidding around, like, it's kind of like this, like if you're starting to move to a direction where there's just too much of one species, you're kind of losing the intent of, again, if the purpose is just to try to accommodate the tree replacement credits and not have to pay more into the fund. I mean, you can landscape your property at a point where, okay, I'm not going to have an issue with the landscaping, but because of what's being removed and what's being replaced, we're going to have to stop at a point where I can't count those shrubs anymore because it's just, you know, too many of a particular species. So that's kind of the discussion we were having this afternoon about, may not be able to go full bore with all the shrubs if you're not willing to amend that, but it would just, you know, the end of the day, you know, probably take in the range of two to five trees at most, sort of like off the table, and then that would have to go to the, to the fund, so.
So our replacement value is 60 trees, as calculated. I took the two-tree credit. Mr. Corelli may take the five-tree credit, but whatever it is, we're in agreement, we're within a few trees.
Right, right.
Right, right, I agree.
Are we recommending a five-year maintenance period for the tree planting?
Yes.
Okay. Is that okay?
Yeah. It's stormwater?
Yeah. The overall has the driveway on it, and we can probably increase the size so that we can concentrate on the driveway.
First of all, we were shocked that utilities were not brought up to this lot. It was quite a shock. Typically, when you build a road or a driveway, the utilities are installed before the driveway's built. So it was a surprise to find out that the water service is 600 feet away from us, and the electric is 180 feet away from us. But we now have to bring the service in.
Right.
So we had the utility lines surveyed. First, we had a firm come in and locate the electric communication lines, gas lines. We had the water department locate the water services, and we...
Is there gas out here, too?
There's gas. We're not going to connect to the gas. We're going to use propane. However, we have to avoid the gas. It's, the gas is in both shoulders of the driveway. It actually loops, it comes up the driveway, crosses, and goes back, so they have a loop system there, so utilities moving. The electric's in the shoulder. Everything's in the shoulder. The pavement is what's free. Obvious, as you know, the area, the landscaping along the frontage of the house on the right coming in is extensive, so we do not want to be in the shoulder. So we've developed a plan whereby we install the water line five feet off the curb in the pavement.
So that planting is pretty mature, so that will avoid the roots as well to that planting at all?
Yes, yes. The plantings are probably back about, where the main stem is, is probably about eight to 10 feet back from the curb, so we should be about 13 feet from the trees. There's about 430 feet of water line that we would have to install, and about 60 feet of electric and communication line within the shared portion of the driveway. The driveway's 21 to 22 feet wide, so it's extremely wide common driveway. It's almost as wide as the road.
At the top, doesn't it get down? Doesn't it?
Past the neighbor's property, past the neighbor's driveway, it starts to narrow down to, right after it, it's about 19 feet, and then it gets a little narrower. But at that point, we're not, we're not inconveniencing any of that.
At that point, it's only servicing your property.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So our main concern is the initial 400 feet of leading access open to the neighbors as we build the system. The system shouldn't take long to build, and we could probably install that water line within a matter of a few days. But it'll be five feet off one curb, so it leaves us plenty of room for a vehicle to pass on the other side.
So you'll have some rubble as you dig it?
Yeah, but what we...
So you have 21 feet, and then five feet off, so it leaves you 16, so you're going to have another, what, two or three feet, just as safety? So I guess you'll end up with...
Just as safety.
So you'll have, what, maybe 12 to 14 feet, which should be...
Probably, yeah, 12 feet. All you need is 10 feet for a car to pass safely through there.
Moving five to six miles an hour, so it sounds like...
Yeah. We probably won't be having any spoils in the driveway because we're going to fill, backfill the complete trench with K-crete. That allows us to drive over the trench the next day. So we'll K-creed it, we'll plate it. It also allows us to repair the roadway immediately. We won't have to wait through the winter season for it to settle. Immediately after installing the water and electric lines, we'll come back and replace the pavement.
And that's two trenches you're going to do, right?
Well, it's...
Water 10 feet away, they're electric?
Well, the first, the electric box where we're connecting to is probably within 10 feet of the driveway, the last driveway. So we're only, we only have maybe 60 feet of disturbance, just crossing in front of the driveway. And we want to stay five feet off the curb because there's a decorative driveway apron there, and we don't want to be anywhere near that.
Right, right.
We do have two crossings that we have to contend with. One, as we come up, as we come up the side of the driveway, and before we reach the last driveway, we want to cross over to the other side because the electric will be, we want to keep the electric on each side. So we're going to have to cross over. At that point, we will be blocking the road for a period, the driveway for a period of time. We will have plates in place. We will coordinate with the neighbors. It'd probably be a three, four-hour period where we'd open the trench, put the necessary conduits in, and...
Where is that located on the driveway here? Just to get our bearings here.
Crossover, I think. I believe this is the driveway. This is the electrical box whereby we're coming out of the electrical box and coming up this side with the electric line. So it'll be crossing in front of the driveway at this location, and the water line comes up, and right here, it crosses over to the other side of the road. So one crossing will be the water line, and a separate crossing will be the electric line.
They'll be done at two separate times.
Right.
But it won't be an inconvenience for a few hours.
But if they did park their car on the other side, they could get out for three hours, right?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And we would have to coordinate that with the, with the neighbors. We also prepared a, I mentioned the K-crete, the replacement. Any curbing that may be damaged, or any grass that may be disturbed, obviously, we'd have to replace that in kind. We did a construction sequence plan for this work. We included it on the notes page. It requires coordination and communications between the contractor and the neighbors, exchange of phone numbers and emails, so that we can keep them up to date on what we're working, and when we may be disturbing these areas. It also clarifies the responsibility of the repair.
And we presume that these crossings and these sorts of, you know, with this interruption, you'll work around school hours, you know, when buses are, and schoolchildren are going to the school?
Hopefully, we do it in the summer months.
Okay.
But yes, obviously, we will work that out with the neighbors, as the least inconvenience But I think it's pretty well detailed in the notes. Now, Bob had some comments on the notes, and we'll, obviously, we'll incorporate all his comments into the notes. The only issue I do have is Bob was looking for a 10-foot separation between the existing utilities and the proposed utilities, and we would like to keep that closer to seven feet, because it'll keep us, the existing, the existing cables are about two feet in from the curb, in the shoulder. We want to, we want to locate our line five feet from the curb, so that's about seven feet apart. I discussed it with Bob, and he thought I should talk to, I guess, Jerry Morschel.
General Jerry likes to see 10 feet, but if you discuss with him the good reasons for it, you don't want to put the service line right down the middle, which is the worst place to put it, so if you need to keep that separation a little bit shy of 10 feet, at seven, as you said, that should be amenable to Mr. Morschel.
Okay.
And it's so that we can maintain that lane of traffic when that works.
Right, down the middle would kill the car. Down the middle would just kill the whole drive.
It's a worse place to put it in construction.
Exactly.
Okay.
And if we install a line, we excavate, we install a, we install a line and K-creed it, that afternoon, we'll plate it that night, remove the plates the next morning, and you can drive over the K-creed.
So the K-creed will be up to just about the road level, maybe an inch or two down for the final course?
We'll bring it right up to the road level initially, and then when we come back to repair it, we'll just remove that K-creed.
Okay. Okay. Bob, I think you had some, some notes and comments. Why don't we run through those?
Yeah, quickly, basically, stormwater comment. The stormwater report we did is fine, it meets all the standards of our code, but from DEC's standpoint, it's only because of disturbing more than 5,000 square feet of disturbance in the East of Hudson, unless they make it, they have to get it swept just for erosion and sedimentation.
And we're agree, we're agreeable to that. I think we can't file it until you sign off on it.
That is correct.
But as soon as you sign off, we will.
Send me the MS4, acceptance form.
Thank you.
G1, I just had some comments with the roadway details and sections. Keep in mind, everything needs to be two-and-a-half-inch type K copper. The sections I got were from actually Appendix 2, in the Chapter 113 subdivision code. These are all based on standards that town developed years ago for common driveways. I just didn't make those up, but that's what it says, and that's what it should be. G2, I just have some comments that should be put, incorporated into the bullets. G3, we just discussed, I think Jerry will be amenable to that for good reason. What bullet of the construction sequence should be revised accordingly reflect, kind of, three above, whatever Jerry decides to put in there, 5, 7. You should show the water main type in the roadway, that's G5. G6 recommended that prior to commencement of construction, I would recommend that you take pre-existing photographs, because those photographs go a long way when you have some issues at the end, that the contractor may have disturbed something which may not have.
And I would add to that recommendation. I agree.
Yeah, I think it's a good recommendation.
Headaches.
Incorporate that into the sequence.
As you know, you do it on all construction projects. This is private, but I'd recommend it. Also, you should put right on the plan, Dig Safely New York. That's, no matter how much you show on these plans, and you did a great job of all the aspels, you still have to get them all marked out prior to construction, and get a ticket for that as well. G8, comment G should incorporate the construction sequence in the driveway utilities, as mentioned above. Of course, you have to get a street opening permit from DPW and a tapping permit from DPW as well. I would contact John, they have details and sections of typical water meter pits they like. In general, if there's enough room, they usually put them in the right way. They don't put them on private property. But they would make the call on that, so we'll definitely go through them on that.
It's a bit tight.
It might be tight, so they might have to go over that with John, they make the final call.
Where would that be put, Bob? If they have to go with a water pit and you have to put it in the roadway, would that, is that going to create more disturbance and more delay?
I, to the discretion of Jerry and John, they make the call on that.
It's up to DPW?
It'll be in the pavement.
Yes, most likely.
There's a lot of drainage at the initial...
Right.
...portion of the driveway, so to avoid, to keep proper separation of the drainage, we will probably be on inside the easement, but outside of the right of way, is what I'm thinking.
Discuss it with them first, because they do like it on the private, they don't like it on private property. G14, G15, obviously, the clearing and grading lines have been amended, based on what was originally approved, I'd recommend that they get a amended map, too, as well. And also, too, they should get a declaration memorializing the clearing and grading, and reference the map that they do provide to show the difference between what's now approved and what was previously approved on the previous subdivision. And that's it.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I was just going to comment that we had actually submitted a form of declaration, and we are prepared to do the amended map to coincide with the new clearing and grading limits.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Dennis, anything else you want to add from what we were talking about before? Did we cover everything? I know you mentioned, also, one thing that wasn't mentioned was that you agreed that there were no, would not be any significant adverse impact on cultural or archaeological resources. I think we finally resolved, I think you satisfactorily resolved that issue. And I know that was in your memo, so. Anything else?
I have a question, Dennis.
Sure.
In your memo, you had mentioned that there would be 104 bushes of blueberries. And is that going to stand? I mean, I'd like to know when they're ripe, so I could make a personal house call or something like that, but, but is that too many, that one type of bush?
Well, I, it's more, you know, the location that they're looking to put these, you know, like a lot of these, like, homes and landscape plans, it's, that's kind of why before I was kind of doing that, you know, like, you have a property, and you could have this general property, and you're putting trees here, trees there, but when you start sort of working towards, you know, adjacent to structure, in middle of courtyard-y patio-type areas, it, you know, you start to understandably kind of lose some of the intent of the tree code, because those areas are not really, you know, that, the language of like ecologically compatible or whatever, it's like, well, you're kind of in an area that's kind of more for human use and human value, and plantings are quote-unquote "nice," or, you know, maybe you want to invite some birds or something like that, but it's, it's not as much the focus, so that's why it's, you kind of like walk that line, to your point, where if someone wants to still propose that, I think it's reasonable and acceptable for the location that it's at, but also understand that we're going to have to kind of pull away from you being able to use that as like the replacement requirement in terms of needing it for trees, and you may have to put more into the tree bank fund, so it's kind of, I don't, I don't, I don't think it is, I, you know, for where it's located and what they want to do, it's just that, when you, you know, again, I feel the shrubs and reading the code and sort of analyzing it, it's, it's more of a meant to supplement than to replace, 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 you know, so that's kind of how I walk that line.
All right. Okay, good. Okay, are there any questions from the public on this application? Yes, sir? Yep, come on up.
Hi, Tom Barrett. I'm a homeowner to the 22 Hollow Ridge. So I had a chance to meet with the applicant, Steve and Mike, and he brought me up to speed on everything you kind of talked about. With the water, I have an alternative solution, though. I think that, given what the applicant is looking for, he's looking to get away, I guess, with a little less expense, perhaps. I understand your issues you brought up the last time I was here about conservation, that whole lower part of his property, not disturbing any of it. Steve told me that you were even not going to have him cut down trees in the expansion area for, and I guess Westchester County is, is okay with that, huh?
Well, not necessarily. They're going to ask for a waiver from the county.
Yeah.
The hope is that they will not need to impact that area at all.
Yeah, gotcha.
Hopefully, they'll be satisfied with what they have up top, near the, you know, above where the house is, and not use that space at all.
Yeah.
So our hope is that we will look at that, and although we have it on a plot and a map here, we're hoping that the trees are not cleared, they don't have to level it, and they don't have to build out, you know...
Which is the genesis of your comment last time, which struck me, is, that doesn't sound right, you've got to clear it up, so get what you're doing. So we, especially my wife, has real anxiety over this whole thing. I think you guys have attempted to cover that. However, I think G3, which I just read, the seven feet, just knowing, I live there, I know these utilities, I'm a builder, you think you're going to have a challenge when you start to excavate? You're going to be crossing over that one storm sewer, so it's not like you're going to be able to maintain... to be able to maintain anything less than a foot or two, given the pitch. My neighbor Rich and I have talked about this too, he can't make it tonight however, but as you get down towards the end of the driveway, as the engineer had just mentioned, there's a lot of utilities, there's a storm there, you don't know how you're going to get the water meter pit in there. So that's a challenge, but I have a completely different solution. You, if you talk to the, uh, original developer and what his intent was and what the engineer said, and it's crazy that this guy didn't bring utilities to the site, he, he, he'll tell you that the water was always intended to come off of the lower part and run up the hill, but
Like your house.
Yeah, like my house, exactly. That was precedent, really. So what I'm offering is to stay away from the, the property in conservation, come over onto my property. There's, I, I didn't even mention this to Steve or, or, or Mike, it occurred to me later on after our meeting that if you moved everything, you wet tapped the pipe, it's on that side of the street, meter pit, just like me, and then run up my hill on my property, I can get you to the same spot where, right onto his property and, and avoid all of this, especially for my neighbor Rich. I know that there's stuff that still has to happen up, up on my driveway, which I briefly talked to Steve about, and I think that instead of cutting the road, you could do it in the, since, just brand new to me, I hear he's not bringing the gas in. Typically, I think you could do electric then gas in the same trench, but if you've got no gas and you're just doing low voltage and you're doing the power, and I think you can do that, at least I anticipated you could do that, right across my driveway, and there's a little, uh, swatch of grass that, between my tree, you could run right there.
So that, would that be, um, maybe you could show us.
Sure.
John, can you put up that map? This shows both properties.
Right by your driveway?
Yeah, sure.
Is that where your boardwalk?
Yeah.
Here's that.
You can use a pointer.
If this helps. We're talking about crossing your driveway?
Yeah, it's pavers, you lift them up. The only thing you have to be careful of is I've got a sensor for my gate, I never put the gate in, but we can manage through all that crap. So I think the biggest thing is if, if, if Bob would entertain it and you just have to redraw and resubmit, but I'm, I'm pretty confident you can, because as you know, my property has that big, um, section off of, uh, off of twenty-two, or off of the Hollow Ridge where it's all clear. I mean, I'd even give that back. If you said, okay, look more
Down below?
Yeah, down below, I have to cut that and everything. And I know the original Farafecchio site plan, you know, wanted that, I don't know why, but I, I consider some kind of, you know, you want that back, I'll plant some trees, we'll let the rest of that just grow. I mean, I'm open because I just don't think that, given the applicant and the heartache it's going to cause me and my neighbor and that if you basically go right where, in my property, and I looked and you've got a, and I don't think it's steep slope, you can get a, a, a machine, because Steve was worried about, there's some areas there on his property where it's pretty steep, you can be able to get a machine that, you could use a ditch witch and, and just run the line straight up. So if I could, they
Do you have that map, John, where, I don't think that works. This is the existing driveway, the, the one that shows the, the property, the setting, you know, between Hollow Ridge where it curves around?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. Let me try.
You have the G two, Joe.
Do you? Okay. Yeah, it's not rotated the way it helps you.
On the view.
Okay. The other way?
Oh, yeah. I think that's kind of worked.
That actually works too if you really
I think that's right.
Yeah, right, if you want to close the box.
Yeah.
So right, right about in there.
Right.
So this is the property line, if you wanted to go right here and put your meter pit and then just run up my property, I've got about fifteen feet of area where this, 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 the, the, the grass area goes like that.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's about fifteen to twenty feet between my retaining wall and that grass area that you'd have to disturb. But I, I think you gave me permission while I built my wall for temporary disturbance, ten feet away from that wall, you'd be in that area, so you wouldn't. And you could just continue to run till you get to that point right there, which is where, instead of coming this way, you're coming up this way.
And how long a run would that take?
Much less.
Much less.
It's probably about a hundred fifty feet, something like that. So logistically
It may be, it may be, it may be the equivalent of this, there's something close to it.
But it's a cleaner shot.
But it's, it's, yeah, it's less, less, uh,
Well, didn't you say it was, you had to run six hundred feet, was it?
No, four. Yeah, sorry, I
From, uh, along the driveway?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about six hundred.
And by
Yeah, this isn't a hundred fifty.
By
I looked at options on our property
Right.
To come up that route.
Right.
And I was, I was six hundred and fifty feet. Uh, obviously, I wasn't going in a straight line, I was trying to work it up the hill.
Right. This has the advantage because it's already pre-disturbed and it's also mostly long, so it's a lot easier and less impact.
Yeah, if, if an easement could be worked out, you know, what, what we'd probably ask for, Terry, talk, but maybe an approval based on coming up the driveway, but if we could work out an easement with the neighbor, then we would obviously
Not by the plan? Okay. Yeah, no, that's what I kind of
That, yeah, that would be great because it's not, it's not just an easement, but if you have financing on the property, we'd also need your lender to consent to the easement, and we're talking about potentially more involved delays. But if we could get an approval with what we proposed in terms of what we have control over, and in the alternative, we can work on that, that measure, that's something that we're amenable to trying to do if, in fact, we can make it happen legally, not just physically.
Right.
Can I say one thing then?
Sure.
You could go wrenching this whole thing here. Well, you got to make certain too, and I know when you come in with these subdivisions, there's things called clearing and grading lines. You might want to know where that is relative to the new service line on the adjacent property.
Right.
Just to bring it to your attention. We say it on show on this map.
Right.
Just
Would it trigger a slopes permit too? Steep, steep slopes?
Speak up.
Yes. Possible trees.
I was asking just the only whether it would trigger a steep slopes permit.
If the decent impacts.
Yep.
Only will that sit aside.
But if it, if it, if it is a steep slope and it's repaired to what it was previous, then that's going to be less of an issue for us.
Right.
So, same thing with trees, if there's a tree or two that are in the way, I, I don't think you're suggesting there are any trees in the shot that you're proposing, so that should hopefully be moot and, whatever that means, and that should make it easier to do. And, um, you know, when I look at the distance from coming up and around to the house, the shot that goes up, you have to just to the, let's say, the top of that green area, it, it is less than the six forty that you were playing with the other way, you know, when you're coming up, so.
It will be less.
So it has a time, a time factor, but it has, uh, some small cost advantages most likely, probably
No.
Serious money, you know, at least, at least lunch money.
Yep.
A lot less protection to do in the driveway, a lot less coordination to do with the neighbors, there's, there are some benefits.
Yeah, I mean, less headaches for everybody.
Yeah, so I, I think if we could just, I appreciate the, the support, I, I, I'm not sure, I hear that everywhere, but if I could just get, we can exhaust the possibility in making it work. I know that with the applicant, my meeting was, was actually a good one. I felt like he understood us and was really gonna, and I think my wife will be sending him some comments directly instead of through the board, so that he's cognizant of our, our issues and, and is, is, is going to work with us, so if it has to go back into the driveway, but if we can exhaust the possibility, Bobby, of, of making that work, and that would be a home run.
Mm-hmm.
Just, I think, all around. You avoid the conservation, he saves some money, we save some heartache.
Okay. And the applicant, uh?
Yeah, um, we're certainly willing to look into it. The, the only concerns we have are, is it going to be legally possible to do it? And also, we need to have some sort of a reasonable timeframe on what it means to exhaust that analysis. We can't go on indefinitely trying to do it. But we have, you know, they did meet in the field and I think had discussions in good faith. The intention is to work in good faith going forward. We can start working on that, you know, very quickly, uh, in trying to investigate that. I just don't know what we're facing and we don't want to be tied to having to pursue this for six or eight months if, in fact, you know, we can start construction sooner than that.
Well, I'm a little confused. If, if this is a straight shot with, uh, you know, nothing else and it's restored to where it was, uh, I would hope that, if there is a mortgage, there is a mortgage?
I, I have a note on it, yeah.
Oh, you have a note? Okay. I would hope that, you know, that would, that whole approach would make the, the lender feel uncomfortable that it's not much of an issue, there is an easement, um, but still they would have the right to continue to use the, the ground surface, you know, on top of that easement.
I would hope so too. Typically, what's required in my experience is that if you ask a lender for that, they require an appraisal and they, you know, have a review process and it's, it's, they look at everything the same way. Uh, it doesn't matter if it's com, it's illogical that it would go in that way or if it's something more extensive, that would preclude someone from using some land.
So I, I'll pay out my note then.
Well, good.
Can you do that? That would be great.
We don't want to take your personal finances.
But that, those are my only concerns. It's, it's hard to answer with complete conviction without really knowing what the, all the facts are.
Right, of course, of course.
Right. Um, well, with the interest rates as low as they are, you could afford to do it temporarily until work is done and then perhaps write another note.
Next thing you know, he's going to ask you if you have blueberries.
Yeah. For ten blueberries, I get one? Okay.
Well, I would propose that we, um, uh, we could extend the, uh, public hearing to another month and see what the results are, see what we can get, and, um, and see if this alternative can be done, because again, to the applicants, what's that?
Go ahead.
Right. To the applicants, um, I, I think it's very fair of the applicant to ask for some sort of timeframe whereby this, this, um, this can end, you know, and so that we have something set up. But I think what we're hearing here is an alternative that really is something that comes up in public hearings, and that is something with less impact, and I think it's something that we can look at in terms of, is this really a bona fide alternative? And if so, we're, we're, we're avoiding a lot of situations here. And I think that's what the law tells us to do. So our first thing is avoidance, then mitigation, so if we have an opportunity here, if it's real, uh, to avoid some of these impacts, I think we're obligated to, to, to search this out.
Yeah, my intent was not to, to hold off the applicant, so
No, I, we can't do that. We can't do that. So I mean, we have to put everyone on a very short leash to try to get this resolved and hopefully, whatever we do, get them set so that they have the summer season to get this thing done.
I was, I was thinking that it'd be part of the, what we proposed with the words that they come up with, is that they move, they move forward with all of their planning and this is, is laid out, and it may be that, given that, you know, we still have three months to summer or two and a half months, well, I don't know, it could be ninety tomorrow, I guess, but, uh, you know, that they have the, they use that time beyond approval. We give an approval for the stat, you know, for the statements and everything that's put here with the, the intent that they have to do, due diligence, and, um, you know, and that we have the right to reopen it if we don't feel there was due diligence done properly.
I think that's a little bit more difficult, frankly. I think it would be better to have something that we say is approvable at this point, unless we hear from others, approvable, but not necessarily approvable at this point because we have, I think, an obligation to consider an alternative with, uh, that avoids some of these impacts.
But if the alternative takes three months or four months to do, then that may create a problem for the applicant.
Uh, I understand, but we've, we've, frankly, I think when we looked at alternatives, uh, a timeframe of two or three or four months is really, in the big, long picture, hasn't been that much of a concern. I think the, the impacts here are short term. They're inconvenient short term, but to the extent that if we're going to be doing this work in June and July, I don't think it will impact us tremendously if we're back here in a month and we're looking at this saying, yep, we got an alternative that we can get done. Yes, sir? Come on up, yeah.
Do you have permission?
I, yeah.
Go ahead, Steve.
Wow. Enjoy it while you can, that's our
Tom, we really
I take no responsibility.
We appreciate you offering, so please don't get me wrong, but we've been through before this board for a long time. Uh, we're not going to get into water line service right away, even if we have an approval, so I believe it'll give Thomas enough time and us to try to work this out. It's a very good offer he's making, we like it, but we just don't know, like Jerry is saying, the legalities of it. But if we have an approval here and we're not putting a water line in for the next two to three months, that's plenty of time to resolve this thing, rather than adjourning this again. We know we have an option that to us is better than coming up the road and also to the neighbors, and we'd like to work towards that. But it's a hardship on us to adjourn this and come back again, and it could be more issues again, things might not be resolved. I would say if we can get an approval and hold off doing any wordwork, roadwork for the next ninety days to try to resolve this, we would come back to the board and amend whatever the resolution was or whatever we had to do at that time, based on what we can work out with the neighbor.
And we'd accept the fact that we know there'd have to be another public hearing. I mean, it's not something that, that you would be able to do with just, you know, suspended, you would need to make the proper applications, there'd have to be a public hearing, we'd have to go through the, the process, but it would be in the nature of an amendment, of this amendment of the amendment, which is where we are now. It, it just, it, it gives us some, some comfort and security to know that we can start going ahead, we can finish design drawings, we can do construction drawings, and we can really feel like we have wrapped this application up. If, if we can't work out the alternative, then at least we know we can go forward and we can take action. Um, I anticipate there's going to be some surveying work that's going to be necessary on the abutting property, uh, may need to have some title search work done, we'll have to deal with the legalities of, of any lender's consent. Um, all those things can take, can take a lot of time.
Sixteen, ninety days.
Right.
You're lucky.
If you're lucky.
I'd be okay with, with approving this design, but having assurances that, you know, nothing breaks the ground until we know that they have not been able to get it done. You know, they don't go and rip up the driveway until we know beyond a shadow of a doubt that they couldn't go through the woods and they got to go up the driveway.
I, it just seems to me that if, if there's an approval, uh, the level of discussion and negotiation is, is tilted.
True.
All right? And that's, and again, I go back to what I think my interpretation of our, our regulations are, and that is to explore those areas that avoid impacts. So I'm, Jennifer, maybe you can help us. I, I don't, I'm unaware of anything in terms of a contingent approval. It's either yes or no, it's not, it's not sort of, not halfway.
Except that, I, I mean, I'm confident that we can craft the wording of the resolution to accommodate both situations so that, um, as Greg mentioned, you know, in the event that after exhaustion of all remedies, you know, we can find the, the appropriate wording, um, that they are not capable of going up through the neighboring property and we have the, uh, the approval in place to go, uh, up through the, the common driveway.
It's either yes or no. It's not, it's not sort of, not halfway.
Except that, I, I mean, I'm confident that we can craft the wording of the resolution to accommodate both situations so that, as Greg mentioned, you know, in the event that after exhaustion of all remedies, you know, we can find the appropriate wording, that they are not capable of going up through the neighboring property and we have the, the approval in place to go up through the common driveway. So I think we can, we can have sort of alternatives, an alternative mechanism that gets triggered by a triggering event in the resolution. So I think we can address it in the resolution. It's whether the board wants to move forward in that fashion or wants to try to get a little bit more clarity on it. I, I just, you know, having been in the shoes of someone who's trying to get the lender's approval for an easement, I mean, Greg mentioned thirty, there are sixty to ninety days. That's if you're lucky. I mean, I've been involved in situations where it's taken six to eight months to get the lender's approval. So I just don't know if adjourning to the next meeting is really going to bear much fruit.
Sufficient time, anyway.
Yeah, as far as further clarity on the issue.
The only other point I'd make, too, is that I understand the point about your duty to require us to look at alternatives, but as a matter of law, an alternative that requires us to do something on someone else's property is not an appropriate alternative that you could force us to look at. And it's not that we're not willing to do that, but it distinguishes, I think, a little bit from, from your experience in looking at other alternatives, either citing things differently on the site or something different with respect to public property or property we have control over. So I would distinguish this case in that way. And we will work in good faith. It's not that we're trying to get leverage, you know, disproportionate leverage and trying to be able to just give lip service to the effort. It will be a concerted effort to try to make it work.
Okay. Any other comments from the public on this application? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Not yet. I have, I have one minor question.
Sure.
On the short form. I believe it is.
Yep.
Item nine, I'm confused. Maybe someone can help me here. It says, does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? And the answer is yes. And it says, if the proposed action will exceed, please describe the features, and none are described. So that needs to be fixed.
Unless it just meets the requirement. If it meets, then they don't have to explain how it exceeds. So I guess the question is whether it meets or whether it's exceeding.
So then we need them to say, it only barely meets. It doesn't exceed. Okay? So, so there's a clarification. That's why I asked. I'm not sure what exactly, how it goes. That can be done on the side, I would believe.
Okay.
And, I don't have anything else? I don't think so. Let's see. Oh, well. On the other side here, yeah. Let me see. We did that, we did that. And, about the, oh, good.
Okay. Greg, anything?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. If not, if we're set, in order for the comments, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to direct staff to draw up a resolution for, you know, the next time we meet or maybe afterwards, sometime in April? But according to the standards that Jennifer outlined, with those kinds of conditions?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about this resolution. The other one. Okay, we move to our next item. This is an informal appearance. This is the Chang-Sperber Random Farms. This is an application for a subdivision approval, site plan approval, tree removal and replacement approval, forty-nine random farm circle and fifty-three random farm circle. This was three o'clock. I did look at it. Did you have this in your package?
This? Really? I don't understand it.
It was given at a previous meeting.
Oh.
Oh.
We're easily confused, I think.
Memo file.
So we have to be careful about that.
You gotta hit slop us in the head when you do that.
Yeah, I think it's best to have it with a package because, I, I searched mine at home and I couldn't find it at home. I'm not saying I didn't receive it. Believe me, I'm not saying that.
Okay.
Greg, what is that button you hit to make the screen come up bigger?
Oh, um, yeah, if you go up to, oh, you're PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Are you, oh, so you're PowerPoint. I think you could go to, to slideshow or view. Either one will get the big thing. Click on view. I think if you go to, yes, Helen, PowerPoint's not my strong suit.
My, my, no, that.
You might just be able to.
Go to the bottom, the slideshow. Go to the bottom, Jerry. See, see on the, where you can zoom? There's a picture of like a screw. It's still gonna keep the pains on it. Don't worry about that. Go to the left. No, 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 no. There's a little.
I'll help you. And you could get rid of the thing on the left.
Let me help you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go to the right.
Jerry, I'm very disappointed. I'm sorry, Bob. They didn't have computers when I was.
Good job.
I'm sorry. That was the last century.
Hey, good evening. I'm Jerry Barrett. I'm the landscape architect of the project and I'm here this evening with Mr. Chang, who is one of the applicants, and Mr. Sperber is also here. I think he's up in the hallway. So this is a, this is a project, it's, I think it's kind of in two parts, where part one is a subdivision, if you will, a lot line, a property transfer, and then Mr. Chang, once he acquires this piece of property right here, then he'd like to improve it into his yard. So what we have is, this is random farm circle in here. We have a long common driveway coming down. Sperber property is here, Chang property is here, and this is the subject parcel right here. So this is the Chang property right here, and this is the Sperber property right here. And it actually goes like this in dog legs and comes like that, common driveway.
Kas could use this one.
Yeah, the green reflects right into our eyes.
We get the laser right in our eye. That one doesn't bounce back.
I'm gonna have to throw that away. The Lewisboro Planning Board complained about that, too. Wonder if Amazon's gonna credit me on that.
How's that project going?
No one knows. I can't see it.
Exactly.
Okay, so again, this is Sperber and it's odd because it's got this dog leg. Not only does it, so now you're looking down the driveway, you're looking down here. And so this is Harris, which is way here. That's way in the back. And Chang is gonna be over here and Sperber's here. Then you have this like twelve-foot cut, when they put it, when they put that common driveway in, it looked like they just carved out the rock. So it's pretty much like a one-on-one rock face. And right now, it's all vegetated with trees and shrubs. So the result is that not only is this subject piece here physically and visually not connected to Sperber proper, this is twelve feet higher than this and it happens to be at the same elevation as Chang. So for those reasons, it seemed like it made sense to the applicants to enter into this, into this land swap deal, if you will, or land fail deal. So what we have here is we have.
Jerry, is that a service road that?
This is the common driveway. Common driveway that serves three, three homes in random farms, which, you know, those are fairly common over there. So, yeah, they come in here, they come up the common driveway, Mr. Chang pulls into the left, Mr. Sperber to the right, and Harris down the street again. So in the existing condition, you have Sperber in blue and you have Chang in yellow. In the proposed condition, you have Chang in yellow and you have Sperber in blue, which, you know, now we appended this to, to their lot. So that gives us this piece here, it really kind of normalizes the Sperber lot and it also makes the Chang lot much more functional, especially for the children, because it's, you know, random farms, it's sloping, it's steep in areas, doesn't really have much of a front yard, doesn't really have a very big backyard, but he does have this little area here that's grass and it's sloping. And the idea is gonna be is to kind of extend that thing and create a larger play area for his kids. So we looked at both of the projects from a zoning compliance point of view and generally, in the existing condition, they're both pretty much zoning compliant, except, interestingly enough, that the Chang property is a little bit over on their development coverage. And it just so happens if you add this point two-one acres in here, and even with the addition of a retaining wall and a generator pad, all of a sudden it comes into compliance. So that was kind of like the silver lining of making this thing work. So that's kind of the subdivision part of it. And then what the, what the site plan part of it is, this is the Chang house here. So here's the Chang house, it's right here. Here's the Chang driveway. Here's the driveway. And then this area in the existing condition, you can see it kind of slopes up like this. And then it kind of slopes back down. And then this is the Harris house, which is right in here, and property line ends right in here. So the idea would be, and this is the existing property line, it's like right in here someplace. So this wooded hillside, very steep rugged hillside, that would remain. And the idea here would be to put in a low retaining wall, it's about three feet high, I think, right about here. Other than that, it's lower than that. It's like, so it's two to three feet high. And so we'd put that off the driveway by about four feet or so to leave room to pile snow. And then we would take the fence that he has now and we'd put the fence back up and then we'd landscape it. And the idea would be, we would come into this high point, there's a high point here, we'd cut it down by about two or three feet or two or three, wherever we have to stop a bit much. We'll have to do some task, task bits. And then what we do is we take some of that fill and, you know, we build this low retaining wall here and we'd fill this area here and then we'd fill a little bit in the back here. And the idea, trying to be a more, it's not gonna be flat like a tennis court, but it'll be more gently sloping and more conducive for the kids to play. In order to do that, we have to remove twelve trees. We do apologize at the trees. We got very poor information from the surveyors and with the time clock in the submittal, we didn't get a chance to really flesh that out. So I'd like to maybe suggest I could meet Mr. Corelli sometime out there and just make sure we get that nailed down to everybody's satisfaction. But.
Jerry, what's the slope here? What is, I mean, is that, does that even qualify as a steep slope up there on the top mound or is it just so gentle, it's just a little mound?
We did some, we did a slope analysis and, there's the slope analysis. So you can see, here's the Chang house, here's the Chang driveway. So you have some moderately steep stuff here. When you get up here, it's pretty zero to fifteen up in here. And you, they do have some slopes in here, but I think that.
So fifteen, twenty-five in that area?
Yeah, in, in, in that area. And I don't think the volume of what we're doing is going to trigger the need for slope permitting.
I reviewed it based on chapter one oh eight and it doesn't trip the wires in any way, shape or form for a steep slope. Steep slopes permit, either by the town engineer or the.
Right. Okay. Good.
So, you know, while the work is being done, the Changs would like to have a generator. So we show a generator on this side of the house. We show a buried propane tank in this area right here. This is the area we're doing some filling, so we probably wouldn't have to, you know, we're doing some filling, so part of it could be filled. So it wouldn't have to be quite as deep. We show the grading limit line. We show a construction access coming in off of this area. We've done some earthwork calculations. We figure there's probably about five hundred yards or so. I think half of the material we take out is gonna have to go.
What's the reasoning? So the propane tank is for running the generator?
That's correct.
And why are you separating the generator so far?
From the tank? From the propane tank or from the, well?
Well, why you, why you place, I understand why the propane tank's here. It's easy for the guy to back up and refill it. Why are you placing the generator on the other side?
Well, because that's kind of the dead side of the house. It's kind of wooded over here, it doesn't get a lot of use. And then, you know, I have to get it, you see this line here?
What's over here in terms of house and how close is the house over here?
This is a building setback line. And the generator have to be inside that?
Yeah, but your, your neighboring, is there a house on that side? There's nothing drawn here.
Looks like there's something close.
So you're putting the generator always toward the neighbor as opposed to, to Greg's point, as opposed to putting it on your, your property?
You got a problem is, there's a neighbor here. This looks like a neighbor here.
Yep.
All right, so there's one here and one here. So you can't put it, you could put it over here, I guess, but there's a neighbor there.
Doesn't the generator have to respect the building setback line? The generator has to be within the building setback line.
Absolutely.
So that's kind of why it was kind of a challenge for us.
Can you put up the image back that had the setback line?
Yeah, that's what I'm going.
This has to be, have to put noise protection.
Yeah.
I mean, did you get it right where the air conditioning units are?
Where the?
There's air conditioning units on both sides.
Are those, are those two right there?
I think that's too close to the house and we have to be a certain distance off of the house. Plus, if there's windows, it's even farther.
There's AC units on both sides. There's AC units, I believe, on both sides of the house.
But, you know, if we put it here, we're putting it right in the middle of the grass area that we're, we're trying to create. So that's where we got there. I mean, I think, I think Mr. Chang would be willing to, to provide an enclosure around it. We could put some soundproofing on the inside, we could put some shrubbery around it. We could certainly, you know, do all that to help muffle the sound.
I, you know, they're not bad, I mean, these units, but that would be very helpful. It would be a, a show of good faith, you know, for Mr. Chang, we think, and the neighbor that's over here somewhere. So this is a long run. If you're gonna, how, how long is this run for the propane tank?
Probably at least a hundred feet. At least, at least a hundred feet. I mean, could I move the tank farther in the back? I mean, the reason we, we put it here is because we're filling here, we're putting the wall and we're filling, so we figured we wouldn't have to dig down as far because we're filling. So maybe instead of having to dig a four-foot deep hole, we only have to dig a two-foot deep hole.
So this propane tank's gonna be buried?
Yes.
Is that part of the code? You do that?
I believe so. Yeah, we always do for pools.
My neighbor has that set up, generator buried, buried.
Well, this, the longer you run the piping, the more places it can be a problem in the future. So I, I think, I like it better when it's, you know, closer to the generator. And, you know, and I think the setback from the house is supposed to be twelve feet? Ten feet?
I believe it's ten. I believe it's ten.
Ten? All right. That's good because that's what mine is.
Jerry, can you, can you look to see if you can fit it on the other side of the house?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we'll, I mean, we've gotta go out there anyway to look at the trees. I'll look at the generator and see, maybe we can get it over there.
Well, where's the main electrical inlet to, you know, where's all the, you know, the electrical stuff in the house?
Alan, where's your panel in the basement of the house?
So there's one in the garage.
Okay. There's one in the basement. What's, what's part of the basement?
Uh, so it's an utility room, which is gonna be closer, it's gonna be on the side where you're posting the generator.
It's over here.
So there's, so there's one, one big box here and then there's?
Smaller panel in the garage.
All right. So I would think you'd wanna make sure that, you know, you're not overloading, you know, for the generator and that would dictate which box you use. It probably would end up being the bigger box unless you have to put in a new bigger box.
I'm gonna leave that to electrician.
Okay.
But it would be helpful. It's above my pay grade.
I, I think as part, as part of Jerry's site review, he can, you know, determine whether or not the, the electrical wiring would have to be stretched to a hundred and fifty feet versus the propane wiring, you know, and kind of weigh that.
Well, but if you, if you have, if you're able to, you know, right, if it's right here and you then move it here and shrub it right here and you move and you make the distance shorter that way, you know, so there's a couple of ways to go. Your suggestion's fine. And I think that the, uh, Mr. Chang would, would appreciate understanding what his financial obligations will be, you know, one versus the other. And so it's, you know, not hard to do the calculations to do it, but I'm sure one way is going to be about $10,000 cheaper than the other way. But I don't know which way, I'm sure.
We'll check with the propane company and see what their, what their, you know, I mean, I know we did many of these with pools and I know sometimes we do have some quite long runs. So we'll check with the propane companies, but certainly I could see when that pressure is going down on the tank and you've got that log rod, it's going to be harder to get that propane there. So I, I do see your point. Let's see, another thing that came up, and I think it came up in Sabrina's comment, has to do with, uh, oh, well, I'm here, I'll just talk about, so we had the tree removals. We're going to clarify what those are. And the tree replacements, we thought, right now, this area here is-
Jerry, can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, it's okay, sorry.
Sorry. Take it off and go over there.
Okay, so what, what do we have here? You go, we walk into this area, you got a bunch of dead falls that are in there. You got the standard invasives of the, the vines and the branches and the whole thing, the briars. So we thought what we do, because we do have to replace about 50 some odd trees or I can't remember the exact number, but we thought that we would do kind of a naturalistic hedgerow in here. We clear out all that invasive stuff and we would replant that area. That would give a nice backdrop to the Chang, Changs and it would also provide Harris with a buffer to the new yard.
Okay, well, I, why are so many trees coming down in this, this area here? Is that's where the trees are coming?
Cut down by two and three feet. You gotta cut the grade by two to three feet.
Tell me again why you have to cut the grade by two to three feet?
To try to create the levelish, gently sloping area for the kids to play on instead of a-
So it's serpent time, if you would, or?
Yeah, it kind of starts out by the driveway, it kind of comes up and then it levels off a little bit and then it kind of drops back down.
Take one of these. Take a look at the lines here. It's pretty level and it goes up here a little bit. It's pretty level.
Not bad up in here. It's, we're just trying to get the area-
I, I think it would be helpful, it's, it's tough for us to make any kind of judgment at all until we understand what these trees really are. If they're, you know, special trees and large trees and very good health, I think that's a different issue than just saying, well, they're just trees and we're just going to go do two feet down. So to take this point, I think we really need to understand that information. So it's kind of pointless to talk about it frankly until you get out in the field with Dennis and we have a, you know, a real tree survey, knowing what we're, what we're looking at here.
Well, we do have a, we do have a true, a true tree, tree survey. The problem is the surveyor, the ID was kind of off and, you know, even the nomenclature, how they were labeled was something I've never seen before. It was a little bit odd the way we got the information.
Can I ask just when it was done? The reason I'm asking is because it's hard to tell if some of these trees may have already fallen. That's, that's why I'm curious about the when.
This was just done, I would say, a couple months ago?
Okay.
Just recently.
Yeah, I, I, you know, when I first saw this list, I had one impression and then when I went to the site, I had another impression and part of that is because I, I had difficulty just matching these up. And I said, I'm not, you know, I'm not even sure I'm finding these. So that's why I, I got confused because I'm, you know, I'm glad that you're going to meet me out on site because I'm not sure that you're going to have these, not only just species, but, but the sizes. Like, and again, I, I got, thankfully you included phonograms because I was doubting it was standing in the wrong spot. Like, that's how confused I was.
All of the sizes came from the surveyor. And if you look on the survey, like a 12 inch maple or, you know, it would be like an 11 and three quarter inch maple and it was, you know, like a 23 inch would be a two foot, like a, a one foot nine and a half inch or it was, I've never seen it like that before. So it was kind of confusing and we tried to simplify it. And so, yeah, I'd like to meet Dennis out there straight away.
Agreed.
We're fans of having both the truth and the facts.
So the other point that came up, I think, was in Sabrina's memo. So what's happening here is, one of the points Sabrina had brought up, that this dimension here of 40.1 feet, which, you know, the surveyor had provided, are you suggesting, Sabrina, that that dimension should have been taken off of that patio?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, when we, when we, in reviewing the application and going into the original approvals for the Spurver lot, the patio was not there and it was just the corner of the house that was there. So the measurement was exactly at the setback. Adding the patio has shifted that measurement in and so, which has brought to the attention of trying to rectify that through a variance.
So I talked to Mr. Spurver and I guess he might believe he's not here now. But I haven't seen it, I'm going to go look at it. He tells me it's just pieces of stone set on the grade. It's not like a concrete patio or anything like that.
Can get your survey changed.
Well, but I was thinking that we should, I mean, so if it's just stones set on the, you know, in, in, you know, stepping stones and apparently he said that the realtor said, look, if you want to try to sell this, we should probably have a patio on the back. So he said, patio, so they put some stones in. But it's not like they poured a concrete slab and-
It doesn't matter.
I mean, I would recommend if you want to go out there with Tom and see, a patio's a patio and if you feel it's not that put together that great and it's going to create more problems, just relocate it.
Well, that's, well, I was gonna say, why don't we just relocate it so it's out? We could just relocate it, just change the shape of it and get it out of the setback.
Yeah, absolutely.
It was just a tiny amount, right?
Yeah, it's like half a foot.
It's like a half a foot, right. So we'll just move it.
Or one and a half feet, one and a half.
Just relocate it, but-
Yeah, I think we'll just, I think we'll just make it compliant because what we'll do, because you just got to move the stones, a lot easier. And then we'll get the survey updated. The surveyor has to be up, the surveyor has to update the plans anyway per Bob's comments.
It's not, it's like, it's 22 feet.
Yeah, it's like three inches.
It's 22 feet.
So we could move one stone and we're compliant.
Well, again, your survey's showing it as less than the required setback, so address it one way or the other.
We'll get it.
It's easier to relocate, it's not structurally-
There's, there's four trees that are, four or five, three trees that are in good condition that are 20 inches or bigger. My initial feeling without seeing them is those should be saved if they're good. They shouldn't be brought down. I mean, it's a big area and let them grow bigger. What do we have, 24 inches is the?
This is a specimen.
Seven is this one, the 20 inch tree. Eight, so, let's see, yeah, seven and eight, these are the two big ones and, you know, they're both about 20. Nine is big.
Oak and maple?
Yeah.
Wasn't this also a conservation development?
It's a conservation subdivision, yes.
So that makes it a little bit more difficult also, I think, on the tree clearing. So we'll see what, see where they're located.
Yeah, I just, I think that there needs to be more concrete information provided to the board and a re-submission and address staff comments.
I think we could, you know, we'll, we'll certainly look at that. I just wanted to touch on one thing. I know Bob had asked a question on, on the coverage calculation. Bob, this is the question you asked.
Yeah, I can understand why you added those too. When I look at that, I interpret that as being over 1,000 square feet. And I couldn't find anywhere in the plan to show that. So why does it show 552 and plus 553?
Well, so what this one is, it says driveway, parking and walkways. So the first number is the driveway and parking. This, the second number is the walkways and they total that. I mean, that's what that is. And then these two numbers are terraces. There's a terrace on the back of the house and the side of the house. So it's terrace one and terrace two. I think it's confusing because the numbers-
You shouldn't just combine them all together.
Makes sense, you guys provided, you guys want us to break it between terraces and walkways, so that's, we just, it, it came out, it actually came out to both the same number, 522 point something and 52, so we, we rounded one up so there wouldn't be confusion, but I guess we made confusion, sorry about that.
The laws have gotten new in purpose, that's all.
So I think it's compliant, so, um, so I think, you know, I, I think with that, um, let's see, the generator. Okay, we're not getting the survey.
You don't have the mic on?
Yeah, I'm going to get to those compliant. Mr. Spurver tells me that there is an easement on his property to allow Harris to get to her property in the back.
So is that going to be disturbed by the land swap or the, the lot line change?
Nothing changes.
Okay. Maybe we should probably show the limits of that easement on the plan so that it's documented.
Okay. I'm surprised the surveyor didn't show-
So the common roadway will not be changed at all?
Well, the surveyor's going to have to go back and adjust the patio when he reshape it, so.
Yeah, I don't know why he didn't, I mean, I would have thought that-
Take the facts, make it the truth.
That's all true.
When the, when the re-subdivision plot is created, it'll have to show all existing easements, so it should be shown on that, I'm sure.
Probably the easement right here to get to Harris.
Yeah, yeah.
I would imagine the whole thing.
Yeah. So, so, so the question is where's the line? Is it over here? And then we need to be cognizant of the, of the lot line that is going to be formed over with the new property.
Right, that's this and that.
Exactly, to make sure that that easement stays wholly within Spurver because right now it's wholly within Spurver.
But it appears that the easement goes down.
This is the sewer easement.
Oh, that's a sewer easement.
And so, so, so all utilities need to be shown, you know, electrical, water, all of that.
Getting back to the old site plans, keep in mind, these site plans were approved by the planning board, which showed clear and graded lines.
Well, that was my next question. So I need to locate that map that you referenced and where do I find that map 22, 227?
They should be in each lot file downstairs.
Okay, so I would make a request.
One was approved in 91, one was approved in like 95, so. And there were clear and graded lines all over the place.
Yep, oh, yeah. Yes, it was a conservation subdivision, so these things meant a lot back then.
Which gets back to the tree survey for the area that you want there.
And I believe on that survey, there is a common drive coming all the way down from random, all the way back to the back property.
Yes, and I, I do want to commend Jerry though. He, he addressed the common driveway coverage calculations perfectly. It's very rarely we see an applicant come in with perfect allocation on a shared driveway, so kudos to you, Jerry.
Thank you, thank you, Sabrina. So competing with the applicant after you.
They didn't have a shared driveway.
But they got kudos last time, so.
Okay, and, you know, we, you know, as we, we'll certainly provide more details on the wall, whatever Bob needs in the memo. And, you know, we know we've got to restore motor slip and so I think that we know what we need to do, get it back in.
Well, I would say basically you have two, you have two applications here. One for the re-subdivision and then of course the other, the other activities that you want to pursue. I don't think we have any issues with the re-subdivision, those lines. I don't know, there might be enough that we still have to see that you just have to change. I don't know, Jennifer, at this point, can we, it's probably not appropriate to waive jurisdiction over it. Just, just do it. So there's, there's enough still to be done here.
Yeah, and you're going to have to do a public hearing on the tree permit anyway.
Yes, anyway.
Yeah, makes sense, just run them together.
Right.
Yeah, and the clearing and grading lines, I mean, it's, it's-
Sure, there's a little bit more site, site plan development, subdivision development that needs to occur.
One of the things that's-
Clearing and grading limit lines, I'll bet you there's an issue or two there.
Yeah.
Always is.
Yeah, for your board's consideration, but you're not going to be able to consider that without knowing what the tree issue is. Then it'll help inform that, so.
One of the things that's happening here is Mr. Spurver is in the process of selling his house. He's in contract. I think he's going to close in April or May. So I don't know, does it make sense to do a subdivision first? And then if, if we couldn't get everything done by, let's say, May, could we do the subdivision portion so then at least if Mr. Chang had to come back here and it was his property and sort out some of these environmental issues? I mean, we, I mean, we think we could sort this all out, try to move, move this along, but, you know, I guess something just to keep in mind for next time when we come back to see, you know, how we could possibly move it along as quickly, as quickly as possible because we're in March, we probably wouldn't get back here until April anyway.
I don't think they necessarily have to be entangled and they can be separated. So maybe we could, if you wish, and you, and you have some time pressure, we probably could look at it that way. I hate to use the word segment, but we could actually-
I think it actually would go faster. I think it would go faster, you know, once the, the easement for the common driveway is, is nailed down.
The easement and the clearing and grading limit lines.
Well, the, the grading and limit lines, that, that's-
They should be shown on the plans.
Yes, okay.
You're not going to have any, you, you have to kind of separate them.
Okay, you can show them on the law and then we can work from that drawing.
They have to be shown on the subdivision map as well.
We need to know the clearing and grading limit lines and whether there's an encroachment before the property is trans, I mean, the, the Spurver owner is going to have to sign off on a declaration adjusting those clearing and grading limit lines.
If need be.
If that's true.
Yeah, if they need to be adjusted.
And so, so you need to do an examination of the clearing and grading limit lines on both properties as part of the subdivision application. If you want to separate the clearing activity on the Chang property, the, the coverage issues on the Chang property, just deal with the lot line adjustment, add the clearing and grading limit line for next time, then the board can consider waiving jurisdiction.
Add all the utilities too, like Sabrina set out.
The easements, the utilities.
And the utilities?
Water.
Water.
Sewer, sewer's already there.
Sewer's there, and water, I think that's about it.
Yeah, sewer and water.
All right, well, we'll, we'll get back to work on it and see how quick they can get it back here. Okay, thank you very much for your help.
Do we want a pencil and a time?
We've got electrical lots.
They're all underground.
Underground, yeah. We'll show those too.
Show those two.
All utilities, right?
Yeah, all utilities.
All types of utilities.
We have two as well.
Um, what are the deadlines, Felicia, do you know?
March 16th for the April 20th, April 7th meeting.
Can I get Jerry?
No. We can get that done by March 16th, it's already the 3rd.
And then March 30th for the April 21st.
And if you can do everything.
Yeah, we're going to try it. We're going to, yeah, we're going to try it. Right.
Yeah, then, then we'll keep them together. If not, we can, at that time, when it comes back, make the decision as to how to move.
A lot of moving parts, you're forgetting, you're going to back out there, do that for the surveyor to get his work done and that usually takes a little bit of time. Okay, thank you very much.
This was also very important.
Jerry, also keep in mind, I mean, Bob's known as the, that if you have 5,000 square feet, you're going to have extra paperwork you have to do and everything else which takes time, as opposed to if the disturbance, however the disturbance is supposed to be counted is 4,500 square feet or something like that, so.
Great, thanks, Jerry.
Felicia, you get my pointer before he-
Yeah, I'm keeping the pointer there.
Oh, I almost got away with it.
Thank you.
Trying to solve your reflection issues in other municipalities.
You weren't even close, Jerry.
Keep in mind, Jerry, that if you take hers, then she types up the notes as to what you said or didn't say. Okay, just a thought.
Okay, we move now to our next item. This is the resolution for 767 King Street LLC, Chiseler subdivision lot number six. Application for a site plan amendment, Metlins permit, Steve Storres permit amendment, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan, 767 King Street, New York Route 120. Have you seen a copy?
I have, we have, for the record, Stephen Rabel, Cali Goldberg and South. We have no issues with the conditions of approval and we would ask that the board vote to approve this evening. Given a question, so I'm happy to do my best.
I thought we were doing tender.
That's what I thought too. That was one of my comments.
You thought you were doing what?
Page six, tenure monitoring plan.
Monitoring, because we were all concerned that what happens if the green roof just Monitoring because we were all concerned that what happens if the green roof just kind of goes by the wayside and that was part of the litigation and...
Well, that's a...
Well, yeah.
There was a tenure, I think, because of planting, because it's, it's so close and proximity to the lake and that was one of our concerns. But I think you're very correct. There was also something about the roof. We want to hear about duration and maintenance and...
Yeah, yeah.
Dick, didn't you raise that?
Wasn't the roof part of the whole design?
Yes, it was a, so I, that was...
I, to be fair to you guys, I, I think I found that from Steve's memo with respect to the ERP. So if, and that's back in June, so I think what you're saying is correct. Something subtle might have happened that probably did increase that number. So my error.
So that was on page six, I believe.
Change five to 10.
Yes.
And which, you know, paragraph are we looking at?
10. 10?
Par, my page numbers are different.
Condition 10.
Six of nine.
Six of nine.
Oh, I must have reformed that because mine is on page eight of 12. Okay, so I see five year, we're changing to 10?
Yeah, I think just above that, in paragraph nine, this is going to Greg's point, and that was, we talked about getting information in terms of the expected duration of the, the green roof and what was going to be required to maintain its, its function.
We did.
We did provide that. I believe Alan Pilch provided a memo on green roof longevity prior to our last appearance.
There was some info in their last submission.
Not the Chicago package?
It may have been, but I thought we would reference it actually in here as a continuing condition that, yeah, this deals with the storm roofs. That whatever that study showed...
They don't have a stormwater maintenance agreement. Do you want to incorporate it into that because...
Yeah, that's really, it's, it's really a, a feature of that stormwater prevention plan.
So maybe, yeah.
That makes, that makes good sense, Bob.
If you want to do it that way.
Do we need to change the resolution?
I don't know. Where are we, where's the stormwater section?
It's already changed a little bit, so.
Well, do we need to change it?
Just from five to 10. Section 13?
Yes. That shall provide a stormwater maintenance agreement in accordance with chapter 11, due to the extent that we are required to maintain this, to maintain facilities located on this subject lot, including the green roofs.
Including, but not limited to.
Okay, including, but not limited to.
I'll go with those two changes.
I had a question on, on one section and this dealt with just above that. I guess it's paragraph eight, subsection two. Is the New York City DEP involved with any kind of regulations with regard to maintenance and landscaping and pesticides, et cetera? Again, this is so close to the Kentsico Reservoir.
We'll defer to Dennis on that.
If so, I think we should include the New York City DEP as another agency in that paragraph. I don't know.
Which paragraph?
Uh, eight, two.
Eight, right, uh, two, right.
Yeah, eight, two. I got that circled also.
Yeah, I'll, I'll...
Wait, wait a minute, let's, let's wordsmith it, please. We have all tree removal work activity shall occur, nope.
No, no, fertilizer, pesticides, lawn care.
On page six.
Sorry, so my eight, two also says tree removal.
The numbering needs to be corrected. So it's paragraph eight.
Oh, you're right, yeah. A, oh, A.
Yeah, yeah.
A and then the second little two.
It's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, B, 6.
Six, exactly. Oh, I see, yep.
Fertilizers, pesticides, another lawn care.
Yep.
Eight.
God, is it all applicable state and New York, questions for county?
City DEP.
Yeah, New York City, at least.
Okay, I'll, I'll check their regs and see if...
New York State.
Well, not only their regs, but also we talked about, they might even have BMPs.
So I, I think the question is whether or not DEP has jurisdiction. So if, if we were going to list DEP, might I request that we just say to, to the extent applicable?
Of course, of course, yeah.
Would you just be DEP and then infer on the new stand?
That would be a reasonable request. Thank you, I thought so.
Paragraph 29 just needs to be updated from the five to the 10. That's dealing with a maintenance bond.
Yes. Yes.
And 30 also, right? Paragraph 30?
Yes.
Yep, we caught you. I had a question on paragraph 21. This deals with the bridge. I thought one of the other items was that we were supposed to hear back in a condition that we would have information regarding the future maintenance requirements and future longevity, expected longevity of the bridge as is. So we have it, we're going to get information regarding its current condition. We're going to put protection on the bridge during the course of construction. But I know one of the things that we did ask for the applicant to get from an engineer with a stamped letter was, what is the expected life, lifetime of the current bridge and what, what long-term maintenance program we should use for this wood bridge?
Joe Beard, I think inspection and maintenance. I think you don't want to wait until something breaks. You want to inspect it on a regular basis.
Yeah, whatever that is, maybe annually or something like this.
Then it can submit reports.
How do you think every, every five years after construction?
Every year, every two years, whatever, if I see fit.
Yeah, I would, I would say five. Five.
Five sounds good.
Yeah, well, after construction is done, inspected and then every five years.
Well, again, again, once we get the information about the expected lifetime of it, because if they come back and say, this thing is already, what, 10, 15 years old?
That's been many years.
Right, and uncovered, untreated. So now we're going to be using it and this will be construction traffic of, we're going to protect it. We really need to know from the engineer at this point or right after construction. By the way, you've got 10 more years on this thing.
Well, isn't it part of, can we create it as a condition priority of, oh, that a report regarding the finished condition of the bridge or...
And projected lifetime inspection.
Projected lifetime be submitted and the future maintenance and inspection requirements be part of that analysis and approved by the town engineer.
Well, I would, I think we should get that as, as something that comes from an engineer, from the applicant, that's stamped by the engineer to us.
Yes.
I don't think we should be stamping it locally.
No, it would be...
No, 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 it is, yeah.
It would be stamped by our engineer and then reviewed by possible.
Yeah, that sounds good. I think that's reasonable.
So, so then that is, creates a 34th condition?
Or we put it as F, if you wish, in 21.
Well, this would be, F is listed prior to building.
Right, F, F, F is not the right timeline.
Okay, good.
So we can put it as condition, let's put it as a new condition 27, prior...
To the CL.
Prior, yeah, required prior to certificate of, you can see 27, the applicant shall provide an engineer certification as to the condition of, you're going to type it, as to the condition of the bridge and required future inspect, maintenance and inspection to be submitted to the town engineer for review and approval.
Good, that's fine. Right?
And then we'll renumber accordingly.
Right. Any other thoughts or changes?
Well, I'm not sure if we're clear on adding, adding New York City or whatever DEP.
Yeah, we got that.
We got it.
Okay, good.
Under the, under the pesticides.
We got New York City DEP as applicable.
Right, perfect. Okay, anyone else anything?
No.
No?
If not, as amended.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you, you too.
It's too late for that.
No, it's not too late. We're going to be out early.
Well, we got some minutes.
That's right, we got some minutes. Did Les talk to you, Felicia, about, was he okay with the...
He hasn't given me a yes or no yet. He, I sent them to him.
I know, okay. So I, he'd asked me if we could, yeah, if we could hold them for the next time.
Yeah.
So that would be the...
Which one?
February 18.
February 18. So hold those, don't, don't toss them out.
All right.
Don't throw them out.
Right. So we have the minutes of February 11. I have a lot of wordsmithing changes which I really don't want to take time to do.
So what you can do is you can say, submit them and then approve as amended with your change.
Unless other people want to have other changes, I...
It's close enough, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're not going to get sued on it, so.
No, no. Okay, as, as, as to be amended, is there a motion to grant, to approve the minutes of February 11?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I think we're set. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
Somebody.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.